Tonight's meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV. There are members of the Milford Daily News and the town choir present. If anybody would like a copy of tonight's meeting, please let any member know. Welcome, everybody. First agenda item tonight is approval of the minutes. Has every member had an opportunity to read the minutes? They have a motion for approve from Joe, second by Jim, all in favor. Unanimous. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Any members have any announcements or correspondence? All set? Okay, next agenda item is invitation to speak. This is Jillian Burley.
Hi.
Good evening.
So, we had our first Best Buddies Dance last Friday. There was a great turnout and everyone had a lot of fun. Mr. Nelson's tech three students will be touring EMC on Friday and learning about careers in the field of high-tech. Mr. Johnson's engineering class has held the annual solar cooking event. Students use the energy of the sun to cook steak, hot dogs, chicken nuggets, and cookies in the solar cookers they engineered during class. The homecoming football game is coming up quickly. This year, the team competes against Sharon at 2:00 PM on October 15th. We're looking forward to a full house of our super fans and alumni. Ms. Reyes, who is on the staff at Framingham State University and is a senior advisor and coordinator at the Metro West College Planning Center, is collaborating with MHS on college outreach, training, mentoring, and advising to connect with students and help guide them on their pathway to higher education. Students can meet with Ms. Reyes every Wednesday, 11 to 4, by signing up in guidance for an appointment or seeing Ms. Reyes in the cafe lobby during lunch.
Thank you. Any questions? Any members have any questions? No? Thank you very much for the update. Thank you. Next agenda item is the recognition of the Louis Burton Azzi Outstanding Teacher of the Year nominees and recipients. Senator?
Thank you. I want to again thank the school committee for this reenactment ceremony. For the people out there, each year, the superintendent is kind enough to allow us to make our presentation of the Outstanding Teacher of the Year at the first day's meeting so that the presentation of the awards can be made in the presence of all of their colleagues. It's a perfect time, especially since it kicks off the new school year in a very positive way. We were just talking about the kinds of comments that we've received from the people who make the selections. Just to explain, anybody can nominate an individual teacher for the award. It can be another teacher, it can be anyone in the community. It's a community-wide award. Once that's done, then the information on each teacher that's nominated goes to their respective school councils. And the individual who is selected by the school council is the winner of the nomination for their building. So, indeed, there are seven winners in this thing. Then, that information is forwarded to the superintendent's office. My board of directors, and I'd like to mention, as a matter of fact, who they are because they do all these things and are rarely recognized. The chairman of the board is Dr. Carl D. Gregorio, the treasurer, Michael DiOrio, clerk, attorney, David Burton Azzi. Board members are Cynthia Casey, who is the president and CEO of Milford Fed, Gail Cromaldi, who was a teacher here in the Milford system, Joseph Nigro, who was a teacher in the Framingham system, and our newest members are Janice Gerrier and Julie Richards. And of course, the last member is someone who's familiar to everyone, the former superintendent, Tom Culler. These people select individuals in the community. They don't do the selecting. So, that's very important. I want to make that clear to everyone in the community. We don't pick the winner. We have nothing to do with that part of the process. The individuals within the community are given the information that the school councils have, and they have a couple of weeks to review it. Then, they come together in the office of the superintendent to discuss, and we ask them one thing. We ask them to discuss each individual first, rather than to go to a vote or to discuss all of them in general. So, each individual is very carefully discussed and reviewed, and in that way, they all have an equal opportunity. Now, this year, we were fortunate, doubly fortunate. Each year, we've had a superintendent present. This year, we had two, the outgoing and the incoming. And they serve as resources. They don't have a vote. They serve as resources so that if any of the people on the selection committee have any questions beyond the information that's made available to them, they're able to ask the superintendents to have some backup information. And may I say that every year, the comments that are made by those people on that selection committee is, they're amazed that when they look at the detailed backgrounds of each of these seven teachers, that we have such great teachers in the system. I have to remind them, too, that this is the 19th year that we've been doing this. So, a lot of other teachers have been discussed and have been found to be outstanding as well. Now, you on the school committee are kind enough to invite us to reenact the ceremony that took place that first day. However, no one mentioned to the individuals that they should bring their plaques with them, so you'll have to imagine the presentation of the plaques. The $1,000 award to the winner, I think she already imagined that away, so that's taken care of. So, I will now introduce, then, the people who are this year's Outstanding Teacher nominees. Remember, this is not a best teacher award. We have many outstanding teachers. This is our way of recognizing them as such. From Shining Star, Jean Prickett, who I don't believe is here to ... I believe she, did she retire?
She did retire.
She did retire, okay. From Memorial Elementary School, Angela Vandal. Not only is her plaque not here, she was on ... Brookside Elementary, Renee Julie, I know she's here. Stay right here. From Woodland Elementary, Shannon Roach. From Middle School East, Edward Healy. From Milford High School, Eamon Cunningham. And the winner of the 2016 Outstanding Teacher Award is from Stacy Middle School, Dr. Patricia Kelly.
Yes.
Why didn't you say so?
Okay. Oh, me?
Well, first of all, I would like to just say what an honor it is to receive such a prestigious award. And I am very grateful to Senator Burton Azzi and his board of directors for selecting me. And what I think, and I tried to say on the first day of school, and I'm not sure it came out the way I wanted it to, it takes a lot of people to really work with children and to, you know, this isn't something you do on your own, that I have been so fortunate to have wonderful mentors in the over 20 years that I've been in the Milford Public Schools. So, I've learned from the best. And, you know, if we had the time, I could go back and name names that you'd be like, "Oh, wow, remember?" So, I've been, I've been very, very fortunate. And I do believe that, you know, working with other educators who really care about children, who really care about students, and talking with them daily just makes a huge difference in a teacher and how that teacher performs on a daily basis. I've been fortunate to work with great teams of teachers and great administrators, too. And last year, my team at Stacy, they were the ones that nominated me, and they were just great people to work with. So, I'm very, very fortunate, and I'm just very thankful for this award.
Thank you. Thank you.
You don't get another thousand.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I just have to make one correction. I just have to make one correction. We did not select her, as I pointed out. We presented the award, but the selection was made by a selection committee from the community. I want to make a comment that Kevin McIntyre, Dr. McIntyre, now has participated in this process and came as a guest to the Plains reunion this year, so he's become a part of our community, and we welcome him.
Thank you, and thank you for coming this evening.
And next year is our 20th. We hope to have something a little more special. See you then.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations to everybody. Thank you. Next agenda item is collaborative for academic and social and emotional learning. Good evening, ladies.
Hi.
How's everybody?
Great. You?
Good, thank you.
I'm Lucy Jenkins. I'm the director of special education. This is Emily Lurie. She is a school psychologist for Woodland Elementary School. So, we're here today because Emily and I and Katie Lavin from Brookside Elementary School, she's the adjustment counselor, we were able to write a grant through the Metro West Health Foundation. So, it's an early childhood grant focusing on the social-emotional needs of students in our district. The grant is, we were awarded $130,000 over a four-year span, and our first year is going to be dedicated to researching basically what we already have in our district for initiatives and then looking at how we can better address the needs of all of our students. The focus is on their overall physical and emotional well-being. So, for the first year, it's $25,000. We have contracted with CASL, which is the Collaborative for Academic and Social-Emotional Learning. So, Emily will tell you a little bit about CASL and their visit that's coming up this month.
So, CASL is the leading organization for social-emotional learning for research policy and practice. They're going to be coming to us on October 26th and 27th. They're going to be visiting every school. They'll be speaking to our personnel. They'll be doing observations. They'll then take all of that information, and they'll produce a report that outlines our strengths, our weaknesses, and gives us recommendations, as Lucy has said. It's a multi-year grant, as Lucy said again, and every year, we will be, after this year, this year is the evaluation year, we'll put that money towards that, but subsequent years will be, will go to funding the recommendations that CASL has given us. We formed a district team. That team will help us with the implementation with this, and we're also sitting on a cohort with other surrounding towns that are also receiving this grant and using CASL. So, they're going to work with us to brainstorm, and we're going to try to learn from each other and really maximize this grant and how we can use it within our district.
The CASL visit will be from, I think it's October 26th and 27th, and we're going to be looking at, they'll be collecting data on preschool through grade 12. However, when we look at like what we need specifically, it's an early childhood grant, so any of the initiatives that we think that we want to move forward with will be dedicated mostly to pre-K through grade five. And I don't know if you've got this in your packet, but one of the reasons what this is, the Metro West Health Foundation grant is like an appendage of Dr. McIntyre's overall social-emotional learning initiative. So, as an offshoot to that, we have the Metro West Grant. I know you're familiar with the multi-hazard planning committee. We have a social-emotional learning committee that is co-chaired by Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Robin Bratica. And then, we have the wellness committee that is co-chaired by Judy Dagnes and Lisa White. So, all of us will be working together to dedicate our time to look at the emotional well-being of our students.
Very nice.
And that's it.
Any members have any questions?
I will say that we will be asking some of you to participate on the interview committee. So, we have parents, teachers, educators, staff members, so central office, we're all going to be participating, and we will need some school committee representation. We did volunteer several of you, and we put you down on the roster, but we haven't asked you yet, so, but we will.
Just let me know when.
Okay, thank you.
Joe?
Just wanted to make a comment.
Sure.
This is a substantial grant, $130,000 is a lot of money. And I just want to thank you for all the work that you put into this, to garner this grant. I know you did it in a short period of time, so really appreciate that. And this is such an important thing. I'm so glad to hear that this is a focus for the Milford Public Schools and that we have these committees in place to really take a look at this, because as you well know, if we have a confident child that's comfortable in their own skin, they're going to succeed academically, and it's such an important area of focus. So, great work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.
Could I just have a quick thing?
Absolutely.
I just want to, again, just echo what Joe said. It's, to me, any initiative or program is a team effort, and I just want to just recognize Emily, Lucy, and ...
Katie.
Katie, thank you, for their hard work, because they really kind of jumped on board. It's something they're all passionate about as well. But it really, any of these goals or projects or initiatives is really a team effort, and you'll see people from across the district come together to really make this happen over the next four years. But I do want to congratulate you. $130,000 is amazing.
Yes.
It just shows how much you care about our students.
We do. And Katie Lavin unfortunately wasn't able to be here tonight, but, you know, she definitely was a huge part of this. Her and Emily worked many, many hours on this grant, so we definitely appreciate their efforts, and Katie's as well.
Well, thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. Next agenda item is the, forgive me, SPERT? Expert Screening? Good evening, ladies. How's everybody?
It's not intimidating to come up and say this.
No. It's not intimidating.
Yeah, many times, it's always intimidating. Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. So, we're here to talk about SPERT Screening. SPERT stands for Screening, Brief Intervention, Referral, and Treatment. In March of this year, Governor Baker signed opioid legislation that included a mandate to screen one middle and one high school grade for substance abuse using the SPERT Screening Tool. With me tonight is Lisa White, who was hired through a grant funding last spring as our wellness coordinator. This 10-hour position is responsible for the coordination of behavioral health and substance abuse prevention, education, and awareness. So, she will take the lead on SPERT Screening in our schools. So, she'll give you some more information. I believe you all received a packet of information.
Just to reiterate what Judy said, the SPERT, it stands for Screening, Brief Intervention, and Referral to Treatment. It's a verbal screening that has been developed by the Mass Department of Public Health for use by schools. The screening is a universal screening of all students in the eighth and 10th grades. It is not a targeted screening for selected students, and it is not a means or intended to get anyone in trouble. Neuroscience tells us that the developing adolescent brain is at risk for addiction, so intervening early before substance abuse develops is key to a lifelong health of students. The screen is structured, is a structured evidence-based conversation that promotes prevention and identifies early risk for substance abuse. Anonymous demographic data is collected at the time of the screening, and nothing is entered in the student's health or academic record at the time of the screening. When all the screenings are complete, we'll forward it to the Mass Department of Public Health, and they'll look at our results as well. There will be a parental permission form sent via email and on the website so students may, so parents may opt out their student, out of the screening if they wish. And the students will be informed of the confidentiality of the screening at the time of the screening, so they also have the choice of opting out if they wish. Any questions on the SPERT before I go on to anything else? This is the SPERT Screening Tool right here. I wanted to bring it. And what it is, is basically how it will look, the kids will come in, it's part of the screening that we're going to try to do it when we do everything else, heights, weights, vision and hearing. And they'll come in, and we'll ask them these questions, and then based on their responses is how we'll gear anything, like if we feel that they're at risk for substance abuse, will, you know, contact guidance, contact if a community agency like Community Impact who works with the schools if we do necessary. Most kids are not going to screen, you know, into seeing guidance or anything like that. I mean, there's probably the chance that they're not going to tell me the truth, but you'd be surprised when, you know, you sit with them and you tell them, you know, "This is a conversation that I want to have with you," and they'll answer pretty truthfully. I think that I'm always amazed about how our conversations go in the nurse's office. So, I'm looking forward to this. I'm hoping that it will really make a significant difference. I'm hoping to get some good information that we can, you know, even through the screenings that maybe we can use later on to gear some programs for prevention. So, that's where we are with this. It's kind of, it's in its infancy as far as how we're going to actually get it done between, you know, getting everybody down to the nurse's office, and so they're not out of class for too long, but I believe that we can do it. So, we are going to do the best that we can in terms of the SPERT Screening. So, any questions?
Having the opportunity to sit through the Mark Wahlberg presentation last year, that's a very powerful tool you hold in your hand. Anybody that had the opportunity to sit there and didn't walk out of that room thinking, that was very scary.
I agree.
You know, and it does need to be looked at, so great job.
And so, in, another thing I just wanted to quickly touch upon is that Milford is fortunate to be included in the Metro West Health Survey. This survey has been administered every other year for the past 10 years, and it is given to all students in grades seven through 12 during an extended homeroom period. The survey asks questions about student health behaviors and attitudes, and the results help to inform local prevention and education efforts. In your packet, there is actually the pamphlet, The Power of Data, that the EDC has put out this year, and it's a great visual representation of the data collected for the past 10 years. Similar to the SPERT Screening, we will send out parent permission forms via email and place it also on the website, and parents can opt their student out of this as well, which I hope they don't, because it's an anonymous survey and the information is, it's so good to use in terms of like what's the current risk behaviors, what's really going on in our schools, and that way, we get kind of a better handle on what really our numbers are in terms of where we need to look for our concerns.
And actually, a lot of the data that we got from the 2014 survey was what we used to get the grant position for Lisa's wellness coordinator position.
Any questions on that?
Joe?
Yeah, so, some of the previous conversations, just wanted to thank you for some of the work in to get the grant for the wellness position. I mean, that, I think it's going to really help make a difference here. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we have to have these conversations in this day and age, but this is a reality now, right? And you're taking the proactive step to get in front of this and, you know, maybe identify some kids that might be at risk and keep them from going down that path. So, I think this is a great program. I think it's going to, it's very important that we focus on this, as difficult as some of these conversations might be. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
I find it very interesting. A lot of people think that the drug and alcohol problem sometimes linger in certain communities, but in the pamphlet, there's a picture of the woman from Needham.
Right.
Very affluent community. It's over there, too. It's everywhere.
It's everywhere, yeah. It's an epidemic. That's why the legislation was passed, so.
Yeah. Thank you so much. I know you do a great job.
She will. Will try.
Any other member? Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. See, that wasn't intimidating. Thank you so much.
I'm much better in a crowd of like six to eight people.
Good night now, thank you. Next agenda item is grade six place-based educational unit. Come on right up.
I was told to hit the left-hand button for the projector. Is that going to work? Or is it?
We hope so.
Hopefully.
So, correct, we have Mrs. Angelini, principal, Matthew Hagopian, and Megan Burke. Good job, Melissa.
Didn't say it would work.
Yeah, you just got to give it a second. Don't press it again.
Hit it again?
Yeah.
Okay.
There it goes.
There it goes.
You're just going to move the antennas now.
Okay. And feel free, I know this is a formal committee meeting, but just feel free to just jump in if you have any questions as I come up, and we'll try to keep this very informal. So, about a year ago, I'm going to give you just sort of a brief overview of what place-based education is and how we're sort of, what our plans were, and then Megan's going to talk a little more specifically about what some of the teachers have come up with as far as how are we going to tie this into our lessons and our curriculum. So, the first thing I'm going to do to sort of explain place-based education, if you haven't heard of it before, is I want you to think back to when you were 10, 11, and 12 years old, and to think back, what was your wandering range as a child? And I want to explain that a little bit. So, how far were you allowed to roam by yourself, no adult supervision? So, I want you to kind of get that, figure in your head, and think about it for just a couple of seconds. And then, I want to show you this, which is a map showing four generations of one family in England and the wandering radius that they're allowed to go independently by themselves. The largest one you see here is the great-grandfather, 1919. At eight years old, he was allowed to go six miles from his house to go fishing, okay? And then, you can kind of see as the generations go on, they shrink up until we get to the mother in 1979, half a mile away. The sun in present day, 300 yards down to the end of the cul-de-sac, okay? And this probably reminds you of, when you think back to your childhood, whether you grew up in the city or in a rural area or even the suburbs, okay? You probably were wandering a lot further than the kids are doing today. So, why is this important? Because, one, actually, the studies they did, this was in England, like I said, and they did crime statistical analysis, whatever, the abduction rates and everything, nothing was higher than, it was the same, it was just all up here. So, this decrease in their independent mobility and the shrinking of their habitat, what they're finding, studies are saying that it's leading to this disconnect from nature and isolation from your community. And we're seeing that a lot with the kids, okay? So, that gets us to place-based education, which a lot of people think, well, it's just environmental education, it's just outdoor education. It's not exactly that. It stems from that. But if you look at the roots of it, it's you're using, starting with the local community and then, like it's a springboard, it's a starting point to teach all across the board. And this gentleman here, he's a professor, David Sobel, up at Antioch, New England, up in Keene, New Hampshire. Amazing, phenomenal, look him up sometime. And I've seen a few workshops I've been involved with. He's right on the money about this stuff. And one of the things he talks about is, so, it's not just looking at, before I move on, the environment, but it's also looking at the history of an area, the cultural, the built environment, everything sort of thrown into one. And what he says is, there's a lot of moving in and out on this thing here, I'm sorry about that, it's going back, going forward, there. If you look at this sort of graphic right here, this is the kindergarten through 12th grade, sort of a continuum of where the kids should be, what they're sort of aware of in their surroundings. So, you see this part down here, this is kindergarten and first grade. They're aware of their home, they're aware of their neighborhood, and they're just starting to branch out into community. On the top end is high school kids, global, you know, national, all right? But where our kids are in sixth grade right now is they're just coming out of the community, heading to greater, bigger areas, like a watershed or a state or a bioregion. This is where, as sixth-grade teachers, we met last year and said, "Let's focus on that." Okay, let's talk about Milford, and we really brainstormed, we had a few workshops. It was really an amazing thing to have us get together, because we don't always get to have a chance to go together with the whole sixth-grade faculty, so it was really a huge collaborative effort, and that's one of the things I love about this. And we came up with the Charles River. I'm going to skip a lot of the, I'm going to skip a lot of the text on here, but the Charles River starts here in Hottentown, runs right through, bisects the town of Milford, and then runs 80 miles into Boston Harbor. So, we said, "Let's start there," because that's something where it's visible, we can get to it, and it's also where most of the town gets the drinking water from, which I did an informal poll of a lot of the kids, and I was like, "Where do you get your drinking water from?" Last year, the most popular answer was Canada. The most popular answer was Canada. Okay, followed by the big blue tower up near the high school. So I'm like, okay, we need to, we need to do something about this. All right. So how do we do this? How do we incorporate the Charles River? So if, we talked to teachers and we sort of worked out, how would we work in like water, drinking water, water resources, instead of like a year-long thing? And we're just starting this. We're starting it this year, we're building it. It's a, it's a prototype, it's, it's kind of a work in progress, but we're building it as we go. And that's one of the exciting things about this. So we decided to break the Charles River up into like three segments, the beginning, the middle, and the end. Okay? So the first thing is, let's start at the beginning, because that's the closest point we're at right now. Echo Lake, okay? Right over the town line in Hoppington. That's the source of the Charles River, the beginning. So we're gonna take the kids in two weeks. We're gonna have three hundred and sixty-six graders. We're gonna have a shuttle bus taking them in small groups up to Echo Lake. But we're also going to be walking along the bike path. And we're gonna be looking at Clark's Island, which is in Cedar Swamp Pond. We're gonna be looking at Huckleberry Brook. And then up to Louisa Lake. So there's gonna be a lot of walking involved, which sometimes kids like, sometimes they don't. And I've taken some of my, I have an outdoor leadership club at Stacy that we've been doing for a year. And these are some of my kids that, that went just to Louisa Lake and back, and they had a great time. I'm gonna kinda skip through all this. I apologize for, it's, this, this program kinda makes people dizzy, because you're like zooming in and out and going all over the place. But these, that's Clark's Island, took the kids out there, walked around. You can see some of the water pumps that they actually, the Milford Water Company has. And part of this is, I've been working with Dave Condry over at Milford Water Department. And since last spring, and he has agreed to that three hundred and sixty-six graders come through Milford Water Company on October twenty-first, and we are gonna tour the treatment facility. Okay? It's gonna be a quick tour, ten minutes, and then the next, I'm like, Dave.
Again, in small groups.
Yeah. You're gonna have kids coming in and out all day, right? So he's like, okay. We was like, don't worry, we can do this. So that's gonna be a big deal, and we're really gonna talk about water treatment. I won't get too much into that right now. So the next part was the middle, which, this is sort of the dream, where we could get like a, a area where we could go to like Natick and, or maybe somewhere in the middle of it. It's something we're not gonna do this year, we don't think. But, you know, as this develops and we're like, where can we take this? Where can we go with it? This is, the idea would be to go somewhere like, you know, the Audubon in Natick, or this place called Rocky Narrows, which is in Sherburne, with some trails and you're right along the Charles River. So they can see the middle of the river. What does it turn into after it leaves Milford? And then after that, this is something that we are working on, which is the end of the river. It ends in Boston. And I work as a park ranger in the summer for the National Park Service. So I work on the Boston Harbor Islands. And when I used to teach in my other career at Worcester as a middle school teacher, I took my kids out to here and they loved it. So this is where the, the Charles River empties out in the Boston Harbor. And so this is a trip that we are planning on in the spring, taking with the kids. Get on a boat, take them out to the island. You know, the, the park service has actually curriculum that we can use, that it's already made up for us. Map reading, everything, all across the board. And I gotta tell you, on this trip, the kids loved it. These were Worcester kids that have never been on a boat, never been out of the city, and they had a great time. So what we need, to wrap up my part here, the consensus part we got with the teachers. Everybody bought in, everybody's on board. And we've had the support from Mrs. Angelini and, and the administration. And we really, like, it's been a real collaborative effort, and it's been great to see it come together. Just keeping my fingers crossed for two weeks right there. The money part, the beauty of, in two weeks, when we go, we're walking, we got the bus from Lenny. And so it's not gonna cost the kids anything. The spring trip, I know, because I've done it, you know, we're gonna have to stop thinking of fundraising and, and, you know, getting, keeping the costs down for kids that can't afford money, so keeping the costs low to get those boat tickets and those bus tickets. Nurses isn't an issue anymore, it was when I did this originally. And then that leads us to lessons, which we've been working really hard with a lot of the teachers, have been just coming up with things. And we're gonna try them this year, and then we're gonna meet and see how they went. And Megan has a few things to say about that?
Yep, so the beauty of this is, it was a collaborative effort. Literally every single sixth grade teacher was, and actually including one of the STEAM teachers and a couple of the special ed teachers, we're all in Matt's classroom talking about this. And this is kind of what came out of it. And then already, everyone is starting to figure out, the beauty of it is, we can, it's our field trip. We're not signing on with, with a program saying, okay, you're gonna, we're gonna come here and you're gonna do this for us. We're making it ourselves. So we're all, every sixth grade teacher is looking for a way that this can work for them. Science, of course, we're both here, because it's, we're the science teachers, so of course it connects to science. The big thing in science for sixth grade is systems and the parts and the functions of the parts. So we're taking a river, a watershed system and breaking it up and saying, these are all the different parts of it, and this is what goes into it. It connects to chemistry, we're gonna be, we're gonna be testing the water to see what, what's in it. We're gonna be looking at the water under microscopes to connect it to all of the microbiology we do in science. And I even have a lesson where it connects to our astronomy, because when we get to Boston, the Boston Harbor Islands, we can look at the tide charts and see, and just, and graph out the tide charts and start reading those and connecting it to astronomy. Just today, I was talking to the other sixth grade team that's not here. And they all, they all already have an idea of what they're going to do. We have one, we have a couple of math teachers that are working on lessons that will connect it to rate and graphing. So they're coming up with an engineering project to design something that'll help that they can time actually going in the water and then try to calculate how fast the water runs in different parts. We have a couple of language arts teachers that are developing a, a poetry lesson as to either writing poetry about water, what we're learning about water, or just writing out in nature, some poetry that they can get from nature. We've got, and there are reading teachers that are looking to do, connect it to nonfiction, because nonfiction is a big part in sixth grade. And so, and then social studies, of course. Sixth grade social studies is world geography. So they're taking it to a more global connection, saying, okay, now we've talked about the Charles River, how does water affect all different countries and connecting it to other continents that they're looking at? Did I leave any subject out? I think I might have. So there's lots of different lessons, there's lots of different lessons. We're all kind of developing it now. The big thing we have in two weeks is the hook, saying, okay, kids, this is what's here right now. How many of you knew that this was here? And how many of you know that this actually starts in Boston? And then, so we're getting them interested in October, then it come, so all year we'll be talking about water, trying to connect it to water as much as we can. And then in the spring, we'll, this'll be our, the, the Boston Harbor Islands will be our big finale and saying, now look at everything you learned about what's around you. So it's very exciting that we're, and it's, the best part is, it really is a collaborative effort. Where the two of us are standing up here, kind of coming up with all the details of the actual trip. But it really, it's going to connect to everybody's class at some point this year, so.
I think there's a lot of ways you could build it too, like your wastewater also goes into the Charles River.
Yeah.
You know, and, and just keep going. There's so many connections we can make and build it over the years of, you know.
A lot of the interesting thing about it was when the idea came up, it started as a small idea, leading us into the outdoor leadership club. And then, hey, wouldn't it be cool if we did this? Or, and then, it just went, woo, that's what it went. And then I, I wanna commend Matthew Hagopian, because he really was a driving force behind that and behind this whole initiative in terms of bringing the information to the team. And then Megan jumped on board and the entire team, meaning the entire sixth grade, really believed in it and started really getting involved with it. The interesting thing about it is it really does a nice job when you start talking about leaving your, your safety unit, about your own community, how we do that from sixth grade. This is a nice start, if you think about it. You're starting to talk about where you live and where you feel comfortable going, just a little bit outside where you live. And then seventh grade, we are able to bring the kids to the nature's classroom. And then eighth grade, we're bringing them to Washington. So it kind of, this is almost the sixth grade is like the starting point of circling our kids a little further, a little further, and a little further. So we're kinda really excited about how it's bringing people in together when we start talking about connecting all the, the content areas. But more importantly, for, for me, I'm very excited to see a large group of people working towards a common goal. And I think that is the most exciting thing about it. So a couple of things that I just wanted to say to you is, thank you for letting us come here. We really wanted to highlight what Stacy Middle School is trying to do in terms of hands-on learning and the experiences we're trying to improve, improve upon for students. So not only are they learning from their teachers, they're gonna be learning from themselves, but now we're bringing in the community. And I think that's what's really exciting. And we'd like to publicly thank the Milford Water Department, Lenny, for taking care of the buses for us and everyone for just jumping on board. So thanks so much for letting us be here, to explain it to you as, as our, our committee, but also to the community, to let them know how wonderful all the teachers are at Stacy Middle School and the, the extra things they're trying to do to bring education alive to the students. So thanks a bunch for letting us be here.
Thank you for coming. Can I open it up to the members? Anybody have any questions?
I think it's great. I mean, Charles River, I, I know it runs through Milford, that's about it. I don't drink the water per se, but it's great. With this, is this something that you guys would build off of? Like we'll do this a couple of years and then change to something else in the neighborhood, or?
Well, the beauty of it is, we have the potential to do that.
Right.
And we, so probably, like, right now, we have two trips in mind and then maybe do a third one. And then if we don't like it, we can take the same idea and change it, change, even change the theme. Tell them, we don't wanna do water anymore, let's do something else.
Or go like, we had talked about going to Mount Wachusett or Mount Monadok and doing that whole thing. So those were some things that we were flipping back and forth, but the, this was the comfortable starting point. If you, do you have an idea that you could?
Oh, no, I was just, I was just, in my, I was like, you know, like the quarry's a built for, obviously, we don't wanna get to the quarry.
That was another, that was another, that quarry was something else that, that came up.
Yeah, we started looking at a bunch of sites, like the Round Town, like what would be a good place to go? But one thing that did come up is a teeny tiny part of Milford is in the Blackstone River watershed. So if we ever wanted to trace it from that end of town, we could do a very similar thing along the Blackstone River National Park and trace it all the way down to Narragansett.
And they just, yeah, and they just built the, the, the walking trail where, where I live, right down all the way into Unsocken and, phew, beyond. So that's just finishing up now.
There's a lot of ways to take this, you know? So we, we, this was a good start point, but yeah.
So if anyone wants to come in two weeks and volunteer, you're welcome to join us. Take a walk with us.
Matt, if I may, when you first, the very start of your presentation, you were showing where, you know, like in nineteen eleven, where grandpa was able to wander and.
Yes.
And then, present day.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but did you say that, and I don't wanna use the word abduction, but the safety rate of children today is no different than it was?
That particular study, which was in England, in those maps that we saw, it accompanied a study.
Yeah.
Which, which they looked at crime statistics and they said, why, you know, why is this happening? So I can't speak as, to it as far as crime statistics in Milford or this area.
No, no, I'm just saying, it's perception again.
Yeah, it totally, it totally, it totally is. I don't think it's any different here.
Do you remember when you were growing up, you could, my playground was like ten miles of woods behind the house? And then be back by the time the streetlights went on. And boy, you made sure you ran to get there. But you could be so far away, and you're like, we have fifteen minutes to get home. And you were able to, to cover that distance quickly, so.
You know, it's interesting too, and this doesn't happen just with city kids. I, I work with Boston kids in the summer. And this happens, I've noticed it with Milford kids. They go outside, and when I take them outside, and they don't wanna sit down, and they say, I don't wanna sit on the floor. And I'm like, you mean the ground? And they were like, no, the floor. Like, this is called the ground. Because, and what does that tell us? That tells us they're indoors more than they are outdoors. And it's not just city kids, it's suburban kids too. And that was like, blew my mind when I heard that.
Well, I saw that, it's interesting you say that, because the testimony that they did on Mayor Menino, they said one of his favorite things in the summertime was when the kids were on, I forget what island it is in Boston.
Thompson Island.
And he used to go there every day and have lunch with them and get involved with them, because he felt the same way. They didn't, they didn't get out of their environment enough.
Yeah, and it's amazing what, what it can do, just a few weeks and just a couple, little bit of your day, just getting outside and what it does for these kids, so.
Wow. Great, great job, really. Power of you. Yeah? Anything we can do, please, let us know.
Absolutely.
Yes, absolutely.
I just also wanted to thank you. Obviously, this took a lot of time and a lot of effort on the part of a lot of people. And number one, your passion. And I think right now, we hear a lot about people really having a lot of trouble with the curriculum and the Common Core. And I think this is a great example of the fact that we have standards and we have, you know, a specific curriculum. But it's really the teachers making, and it's what you wanna make of it, and how you wanna bring these topics to life for children. I'm even just thinking about the fact that we're in a drought and, and our kids have no idea the value of water. They have no idea what, what goes on at that treatment plant or in any of the other areas that you talked about. And the fact that you're connecting it to all the curriculum areas, and it's more than just a field trip. This is, you have very specific objectives that cross all curriculum areas, and I think it's fantastic, so thank you.
And this is precisely the direction we wanna go in from a curriculum perspective, because like Jen just said, it's multi, multidisciplinary. It's, connects the local to the greater world. And it, and it just shows collaboration among teachers too, in creating something that's gonna be meaningful, not only for the students, but for the, the teachers presenting the curriculum. So I, I wanna applaud, you know, definitely the two of you, but the whole sixth grade for working together and, you know, pulling this, I think, which is an amazing project together, which I think is really gonna benefit and engage the students.
Thank you.
Joe?
So just to reiterate a lot of what's been said, you know, nice job thinking outside the box. To Nancy's point, this is a great hands-on learning experience that I think our, our students will really enjoy. And, you know, to your point about sort of expanding your, your safety zone and exploring, like, kids wanna do that, right? They wanna be out there, they wanna do that. I think that's easy sell. I think the difficult part is educating the parents on the importance of this as well. So I don't know if there's any thoughts of, of doing anything with parents or sending out some informational pieces that talk about the importance of.
It's in the work, it's in my list of goals this year.
Yeah, but yes, we could get family involvement like that, that would be, I mean, I think I told them, a lot of parents who showed up at the, the open house the other night was like, we don't need you for this one, but we might give you a call in the spring when we're getting on boats and going, like, that might be, we're gonna need some bodies there. So, but yeah, certainly like a newsletter or something, just to like, tell them what's going on, so they can be involved in it too.
Just getting them comfortable with the idea, letting go a little bit, maybe loosening up that leash, you know?
Yep.
To me though, I mean, I've said this for many years, this, you know, this is just another example to me that if you criticize the Milford Public Schools, you've never been in the Milford Public Schools. I really truly believe that. When I see something like this, it just, you know, it, it's just, it's so true. It's programs like this, it's just so, you're thinking so far out of the box, but yet you're, as Jen said, you're, you're working education into it. You know? So, great job. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for letting us be here.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, the next agenda item is Middle School East reuse. So we're gonna, we wanna keep this on the agenda, so we can keep dialogue going back and forth during the school committee meetings. So does any member have anything they'd like, like to bring up as far as concerns they have? What I'd like to do, when I spoke to Dr. McIntyre, I really would like to schedule a walkthrough for the committee of Middle School East. So I don't know how we'll do this, we're gonna.
I can have Melissa send out, I think we'll look at it maybe the end of October.
Okay.
And maybe have Melissa send out an invitation and see if we can come up with a, maybe any, like a late afternoon or an evening, where we can take a walk through there and people can get a sense of it. The other piece that we're gonna incorporate into the building project, or I'm sorry, the long-range planning committee, is kind of looking at Middle School East and where that fits into the bigger picture. And what kind of reinvestment it would take to make it functional if it were seen as a building we, we would need to keep as part of that long-range plan.
Not to put you on the spot, do you know, only because I know it's being used right now in the evenings, do you know what groups are in there?
I know we've had some basketball groups in there, and I, I believe we're gonna see wrestling start, I think, once the season shifts. And I'm sure basketball will continue as well, and I think maybe, maybe cheerleading is in there as well.
Okay. So the building is still being used, still needs some use.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
From a community and athletic perspective.
Joe?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, you know, the building is being used and it is being made available for public now. So if there's any organizations out there that are willing to space, we've had this conversation as a subcommittee at least. And I just wanna get the word out there that it, it is available, it has been available, and, you know, we wanna offer it to the community for them to get the maximum use out of it.
Thank you, Joe, because I have been asked that.
Is, is that for any kind of use?
What do you have in mind?
No, I'm just saying, I mean, I've just heard like sports so far. I mean, if someone wants to have like a knitting club in there, is it something that they could do like that?
It's the same use policy as, as any of our buildings.
Okay.
And I think, I think the one issue though is, during the winter time, I think we're gonna minimize the use of heat there. So I think, you know, if, if folks are listening and they're thinking about classroom use in January or February, it may not be the most comfortable spot in the district.
If it's knitting, they can make a sweater.
They could.
Joe?
So, yeah, to Kevin's point, I think that the long-term use of Middle School East will be determined as part of the long-range planning process, right? And that's gonna be a clear area of focus. And that's going to be a clear area of focus. Um, the other piece to this are, are, what are the short-term needs and what are we going to do with that building over the course of the next year while we evaluate the future use of that school, right? And, and we've been talking about that at the subcommittee level, so there, there are a lot, there are some open questions that we need to get answers on sooner rather than later, right? And one, one of the questions, to your point, Mike, is what's the demand for that building? We know that we have, um, a number of groups utilizing that building today, a number of groups have inquired about it. Um, one of the things that we, we've asked the administration to do is to sit down with, with Peter Boucher, with, with Community Use, with Jen Walsh and Special Olympics, and with some of the youth groups to say, all right, what are our needs? Um, how can we use Middle School East? Is there space available in some of the el- uh, uh, other facilities where we can make more efficient use of those other facilities? Um, so I think the first step is sort of, um, documenting or taking an inventory of what the need is. Um, and then the, the other piece to it is, what's the, the cost associated with keeping that building online, right? What are our expected or anticipated, um, expenses there and how are we going to pay for that? So there's a lot of discussions happening, uh, from a budget subcommittee perspective around that and we'll hopefully have some answers for, for you guys shortly.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, and I'd just like to reiterate what Joe said in the beginning is, this, I, to me, is all driven by what is our long-range need or use of this school? Because if there isn't one, if it doesn't fit into a long-range plan, everything else sort of falls off the table. This is, a lot of things are, are floating around now, because if we determine that there's a, a long-term use of this building, then what are we doing in the interim to, you know, cover the operating costs? Um, get the most use on a, on a short-term basis, whether that's one years or three years, whether we're looking at renting out this space, again, relatively short-term. But it, it's all driven by whatever the long-range plan develops into.
Thank you. Any other member? Okay, good, thank you. Next agenda item is reported the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are we doing?
Good, thank you, and yourself?
Good. Um, so our state assessment data was, was finally released publicly. In general, we're pleased with the results and we thought we made good progress. Uh, generally, we did note some, some places that we certainly need some work at and I'll highlight them up here actually in the presentation. But whenever we're presenting this kind of data, it's, it's hard to, I guess, for me anyways, it was hard to say, what's important for you guys to know? And, and what's the public going to get and try to keep it simple so that everybody understands it. Because really, a lot of this data is very difficult to understand. So, that's what I tried to do with this, uh, with this presentation that you have in front of you. So, just to reiterate what everybody took in two thousand sixteen, our grades three through eight participated in the math and language arts park. And grade ten, they participated in math and language arts MCAS. And then the fifth grade, eighth grade, and in high school, I say high school because it was some ninth graders, some tenth graders participated in science MCAS.
So can I stop you there for one second and ask the question, why? Why park, MCAS, MCAS?
Sure. That's, that's a good question. Um, so grade ten didn't have a choice. We have to take, um, MCAS and we're taking the same legacy exam, uh, all the way through two thousand nineteen, I believe is the year. Um, park, park, we had a choice and at the time when we made the choice, we felt that it more closely aligned to what we were doing in our classrooms than MCAS. And at the time we made the original choice, it looked like Massachusetts was going in that direction. Um, recently, I think last year, even the year before, they made the decision to take the test back and create an MCAS two point O. Which is the direction we're headed for this year, hopefully. It doesn't, we're hearing that it, it may not go in that direction, just because they may not have a test ready. So if that's the case, we may end up back in park. But in any case, MCAS two point O will be, look more like park than the old MCAS. Okay, so the types of questions that they ask.
He's not, he's not making any of this up.
It makes no sense at all.
Well.
It, it's, it's kind of, um, it's confusing for everybody, honestly. Which, which is why you'll see, we tried to, I tried to keep this simple. It's, it's very difficult.
Especially the most, the most important person in the classroom, the teacher.
Right, or parents or students and it's very confusing.
Yeah.
Okay, so the park achievement scores, achievement scores, there's five different levels. When parents get their reports back, it's reported on these five different levels, so they'll see a number, um, say seven fifty. If their, their child got a seven fifty, they're going to be at a level four, which is met expectations. So that's what they'll see, seven fifty. It falls in these five ranges. We, we hope that stu-, and the state expects that we will have students in level four and five meet or exceed their expectations. Any questions about that?
Good.
Okay, so MCAT, MCAS achievement scores, there's four different levels. There's your warning, needs improvement, proficient and advanced. Um, if you remember in the two thousand fourteen and previous to that, when everybody, all grades took MCAS. We needed in the eighth grade down for the students to be at two forty and above. And really, the, the information I'm going to show you, we want students in tenth grade to be two forty and above, but to meet the graduation requirements, they need to be at two twenty and above. So as long as a student reaches two twenty, they meet the graduation requirements in high school. All right. All right, so I, I had to think of a way for you to understand student growth percentile and hopefully I can do it so that you understand it. Student growth percentile to us is what really means the most. We have achievement scores, so I, I'm doing, I've done it in an illustration here. So if you look at student A, in two thousand fifteen, this student took a park, uh, a math park exam in grade four. In two thousand sixteen, they took the grade five math, um, park, right? So you could see that in two thousand fifteen, they were at seven sixty, in two thousand sixteen, they were at seven fifty. Both are at that level four, both are meeting expectations. The second, the second example is a high school example. So, the students in, in the SGP for high school, student B took the MCAS this year, well, this past year in two thousand sixteen. But remember, they didn't take a, a language arts MCAS in ninth grade, so they're actually being compared to their eighth grade score. And in, and in this example, you can see that the, the student scored a two sixty in, in the eighth grade and then scored two sixty again in the, the tenth grade. So both advanced, okay? All right, so with low growth, if a student scores between a one and a thirty-nine, that's what low growth is. We hope that the, or we expect that students score between a forty and fifty-nine percent, which is moderate growth. And we hope that they get high growth, which is sixty to ninety-nine.
And can I just jump into Craig real quick?
Sure.
The moderate growth is really representing about one year of learning, so if you fall in that forty to fifty-nine range, it's, it's representing basically one year of learning. Below that, um, based on the test, it's potentially less than one year of learning. If it's above that in the high range, it's greater than one year of learning.
Okay, so SGP, student growth percentile. So remember this, the first example, example A, the student scored a seven sixty last year, or in two thousand fifteen, and then this year scored a seven fifty. So how they determine that is they take every student in the state that scored a seven sixty and they see where they scored on this past exam. Okay, so, for example, the student that scored the seven sixty, some of the kids scored an eight fifty, which is a perfect score, they would be at the ninety-nine percentile. On the other hand, you may have a kid that scored a, a seven hundred and they're at the one percentile. Our student scored a seven fifty, puts them at the thirty-fifth percentile, which is low growth. And these are just numbers I put in there, that's, it's not necessarily the way it was, all right? And, and anything, fifty is smack dab in the middle. Fifty is where, um, the average student scored. All right, and now in our MCAS example, it's a little different because they, they went advanced, advanced. Um, so that student scored a two sixty, there's only so high they can go, so a two sixty to a two eighty was probably a ninety-nine. But then at the same time, you wouldn't expect that a kid that scored a two sixty or in the advanced would get much below a two forty, which is proficient. Um, so two forty would then be at the one percentile. It may be a little lower, but, um, for our example, that's what we're going to use. But he's, even though he's advanced, he's score, he's performing right at that low moderate to low, um, growth range. All right? Makes sense so far? Okay. All right, so here's our, here are our scores. And the ones that I showed you were, those are individual student scores. SGP here is a little different because it's a median. Median meaning half of our kids scored below this number on SGP and half of our kids scored above that number on SGP. So, third grade, there isn't an SGP because they don't take, uh, uh, MCAS or park in, in second grade. So that's why there's, there isn't an SGP. Um, and I, I have another slide after this that's going to compare it to last year. Because in third grade, that's really all you can do with, with the data. Uh, or it's a starting point for moving forward too, third grade. Um, but again, remember, if you look at overall in our, our language arts scores for park, uh, we're pretty solidly in the moderate growth. In fact, everybody scored a moderate growth or a year's worth. Um, and then achievement scores, again, we'll look at that on the next slide, but these are our achievement scores. And again, we're pretty happy with those because of our, our growth percentiles. On the other hand, on the math scores, um, again, we're, we're, in fact, in the math scores, in all but one, we're in the high, we're in the moderate to high moderate range. All right, any questions?
Craig, if I may ask a question.
Yeah. Sure.
So just using that as an example, that, it looks to be grade five math.
Yeah.
Am I looking at it correctly?
Correct.
Does that give you the ability to assess, um, the curriculum that's being used in grade five? Assess the children that are in grade five or even the teachers that are teaching in grade five?
Well, looking at this number alone doesn't do that, but it, it begs the question of all those.
Okay.
What, it, it, there's clearly an outlier, right? The, the fourth grade's at a fifty-two, sixth grade's fifty-nine, seventh grade's fifty-six, so what happened?
Right, and when I ask that question, it's not a, it's not a blame question.
Yep.
It's a question that's saying, does that number give you a tool that now you can, you can move on and do an investigation to find out, you know, what's going on?
It, it starts a conversation. We'd have to dive real, we'd have to dive a lot deeper into the, the data to get some of those questions answered.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, the last year, the fifth grade was still using the old everyday math program. The third, fourth, actually, four down, all trans, all went to the new everyday math last year or the year before. Um, so this year, they're transitioning to the new everyday math. And that's one.
Okay.
One piece to the puzzle. I mean, between, from fourth grade down, all of our kids have math for mu- uh, nine, uh, four out of five days, they have it for ninety minutes. When they get to fifth grade, they're down to forty-five minutes and that's without transitions. So, they're kind of fighting that battle of, you know, if we have great class management, my class could only hope to probably have thirty-five to thirty-eight minutes of math. Um, so that's a significant drop. That's almost an hour of math every day that's dropped. So that's something we're looking at too, and clearly we can't fix that this year, timing. Um, but curriculum we fix, hopefully. All right, so, um, high school. And the other thing about the, the park results is they didn't release state data for us to compare it to. So now, it doesn't sound like they're going to either. So, um, so our, our, I don't know, our third grade students that got a sixty-one percent, we don't know how that compares to the rest of the state. And it doesn't sound like we're gonna this year. So that's kind of unfortunate too. On the other hand, our, our high school MCAS results, we do have that, that data. So, advanced to proficient, which was two forty or above. Um, last year in language arts, eighty-seven percent of our students did, a little lower than the, the state average. Math, same thing, it's a little lower than the, the state average. And again, that was two forty or above. To meet the graduation requirements, kids, all kids needed was two twenty or above, which is the slot, the row next to that, this row. So, in terms of graduation requirements, ninety-four percent of our, our tenth grade kids in, in language arts met that mark. Eighty-nine percent of the math and then ninety-five science. And there's the state averages, which, I mean, we're pretty close, state averages.
Do we have, do we have the ability to go back and, from years past and, and could you chart this the same way?
I, my next slide has the last three years. We, we could go further than that too, but.
No, 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 I was looking for a trend.
But, but again, we're looking at this number too. So, we're, we're. I, I don't want to say that we're happy with this number of ninety-four percent, for example. But this number here is the one that we're kind of looking at too, is, is, all right, so we, ninety-four percent of our kids are passing, but they're demonstrating low growth, so what's going on with that? And we've started conversations with high school teachers. We were in the room, uh, yesterday or the day before with all, the whole entire math department. Um, and somebody from the state, uh, I, it's the D-SAC lady, I can't remember her name, but, um, she was, she was kind of offering some, some help for us. And just different resources that she had that we could, we could access. So, it's, again, all I look at these numbers for is the conversation starter, um, and then we dive deeper.
Craig, just to reiterate for, for, you know, for the public who, who may look at MCAS scores.
Yeah.
Those MCAS scores are only for tenth grade, because that's the only grade that we actually took the MCAS, right?
Yes. Yes.
So that's not an MCAS score for the district, it's just for that specific grade, right?
Yep. Um, high school, because it's, some of the science ones might be ninth grade students. Okay, so this is a three-year comparison of language arts. Now, it's important to note that in two thousand fourteen, this year here, this was MCAS. So somehow they came up with a formula that's very complicated and I, I couldn't explain it if I tried. How to compare park data to MCAS data, the state has a formula for that. Um, I, I just, I, I couldn't begin to tell you how to do it. All right, so this chart, for this chart, you could look at it a couple of ways. You could look at it across. So, how's the third grade performing as a grade level? Um, so you could look at it this way, or, uh, take any grade, right? Or you could look at a cohort of students. So, this group of students in two thousand fourteen scored this in third grade, in fourth grade, they were there. So you could see their, their achievement went up by, what, eleven points? And then now they're over here in, by the time they get to fifth grade. Which again, isn't, it's not horrible and it's, I say it's not horrible because of our median SGP.
The, the other piece too, if I could jump in again, is that you're not making an apples-to-apples comparison because you're moving from the MCAS to the park. So it's a little challenging to really draw, you know, especially when you're talking third through eighth, any kind of conclusion about trends or patterns. Because the test was only used in two years, the park test.
Right.
And it's very different from the MCAS test. So it's difficult to, to look at, like, the two thousand fourteen versus the fifteen and sixteen. And even if the numbers are significantly different, to really draw any substantive conclusion based on it.
Right.
Where we could in the past and we will be able to a little bit with the, with the high school data, but it's only one grade.
Right. And then, well, again, for this chart, you could see in fourth grade, if you just went from this gr- from two thousand sixteen to the two thousand fifteen score. It's not really the, the, what you're looking at. You're looking at, it, it's grade level, but it's different kids. So, what looks like a tremendous drop is actually a gain if you look at two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen in terms of achievement. Any questions about this? So this is, this is the language arts. The next is the math, and I think this is the final um, slide. So, generally, like we said, um, our growth scores are pretty good. This is two thousand fifteen, fifteen, um, we were all, at least in the moderate level. Two thousand sixteen, we have two that we've identified that we, we need to work, and we've already started that work. And I think it's important to note that, when we went into these meetings with teachers, I told them I don't have the answers, and, and I don't expect them to have the answers right away either. I, I don't think that this is, I don't think it's a quick fist, fix. I wish it was a quick fix. But I think that we're taking steps to address um, what we think might be some of the issues, like change, switching the curriculum. I think another thing that hasn't been, it hasn't happened enough is getting these people in the room all at once and, and talking about the way that they're teaching math, um, just talking about different ways to teach math. You know, the way that you or I learn math, it's very different for kids um, today. But, if we try to teach them the way that, that you or I learned math, it's not gonna work for them. You know, we just heard a, a presentation from the sixth grade science department about how, I, I can't even imagine how the, the sixth grade students are probably so excited for this kind of a project and will be so engaged in that. And you think about all the different things that, that students hit with every day. Now imagine them sitting in a row and just copying problems down, how difficult that would be for, I mean, for any kid, really. So, that's the kind of thing that we're talking about, is I, I understand the math is difficult, but we need to start talking about different ways of getting students engaged in the math. Because the, the PARC doesn't ask it that way either. It doesn't, it doesn't just put a list of problems down that, that students have to do. They have to be able to pull the information out of the problems. So, there's a couple of skills that, really a math test is, is testing, and one of them is reading. Because they have to be able to read all the, the information, so. I don't know, I, 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 I think, I'm optimistic because I, just meeting with the teachers, they're, they're really, when they looked at the data and just as, as we are looking at it, it's clear that there's something broke. And, I don't wanna say broke, really, um, something didn't quite work. So, the exciting part for me is figuring what, figuring out what that is and working with them to figure out what it is, and then just fix it. And they're all willing to do it, and they all work hard, so I think, uh, I think we're in a good place.
Well, I think it's important that, that you've already identified it.
Yeah.
You know, now you can move forward.
And, and it's not an easy conversation to have with, with teachers, because you know, they realize this is out there. You know, and it, it's different talking about a third grade test or a fourth grade test, because there's fifteen people. But when you start moving up the ranks here, in fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, there's only three math teachers, or there's only three language arts teachers. So, obviously, they take it very personally, um, and, and they're upset by it. And that's what I think is, that's why I'm optimistic, because they're upset by it, they're not proud of it, and they're gonna make a change, so.
But if they communicate together, Craig, they can only come up with the best practices.
Yep.
And that's, that's what you need. You can, you, you need best practice to improve.
And it's our job to give them the time, so, um, Tim and I are kind of working together and trying to figure out when that time's gonna be available for them. Because it has to be during the day. We, there's no ways of, around it. And I think, you know, the, the next argument is, well, if you take them out of the classroom, then they're not in front of the students. But I think that the return on having them sit in a room for an hour, two hours, it is well worth it, so.
The, the other piece, one thing that, you know, and I'm a data kind of nut, and I enjoy it, and I enjoy digging into it, is that, um, if you look at the data overall, eleven out of the fourteen tested areas that we have SGP data for, we, we, we fell in that kind of one-year growth to high one-year growth range, which I think is very good. And it's pretty typical of our past performance over the last five to six years. We'll always have a, a couple of years, a couple of years trending. One of the things we're looking at too, at, at the high school level is the schedule. Because we're seeing kind of a, a trend down in terms of, and, and it's especially for our students who are struggling in terms of, you know, proficiency scores, and we moved from a block schedule to a more traditional schedule. And again, like in fifth grade, where you shifted the elementary level to ninety minutes of time, we had a similar shift at the, at the high school level, and it really did have the biggest impact on our students who, who have, you know, historically struggled in mathematics in terms of their performance at the high school level. And I think is impacting some of those growth scores, because we're seeing some of the, the lower growth for the students that were struggling in eighth grade, lost some of that time, and we're seeing that trend. And one of the things we're looking at from a scheduling perspective is how do we build more mathematics time, or maybe an additional mathematics course into what we're doing at the high school level to provide that extra support that, you know, some of our students who, who have historically struggled in math, to make sure that they meet some of those expectations. Because, as you know, as, as you increase, math is almost like a big pyramid. It builds upon itself, it gets more complex, and the expectations rise. And we really wanna make sure that all of our students have the tools and the tool belts to be successful. Especially those students who, um, who have kind of shown over, you know, maybe the middle school years, when the math gets a little more abstract, that they're struggling with it.
Uh, so first of all, they can put it all together. It's a lot, and, I mean, I find that it's overwhelming because of the number of reports that we're, we have access to now, and it is dizzying, and you can, Kevin might really like doing that, but it's,
It's really more of an affliction than it's looking to be proud of.
Then I think you really, anybody can. But I think the, another really important piece to mention is especially with our clientele in Milford, is this is a very difficult test in terms of the language and the readability level for students. And even if you're a student who can basically grasp the math, the language of the questions and the way that some of them are worded are really complicated for students. And, um, so hopefully when the teachers have the chance to actually go through the released questions, they can begin to kind of pull apart, what are, what are the language issues, what are the, uh, and what are some of the things that can be taught? And, you know, I think to the, the math point, um, you know, it might be something that we, we talk about at budget time in terms of, what is the value of pulling teachers out, and if they are pulled out, how, how does that time get framed? And do we need some greater math expertise in our district? Someone who really can focus on, how, how is math instruction so different now than it was ten years ago? Because I think in fairness, there are still kids that are going home and they're taking home the textbook and they're answering the questions. And, you know, I know when I've sat with teachers and we've really looked at the questions, it's like, oh my god, this is really, really different. And I think there is, this is just me personally, but I think there's great power in, um, not to an extreme, but in pulling teachers together, exactly like you said, and giving them that time to dig in and collaborate together and with, maybe with some real strong math direction.
Yep.
I mean, I don't know, at the high school level, middle school is probably different, but at the elementary, where you're really building that foundation, it's not typically the strongest suit for many elementary teachers. It's.
Right.
ELA is fun, and you can do, not that math isn't fun, but to me it's not. I, I think that right kind of coaching, because I think also a lot of the teachers don't understand why they, it, in some, in some of, I think with the Common Core and the mass framework, some of the math concepts seem above where developmentally we think kids have been. And so I think that might require some retra- retraining and kind of redirecting staff to really understand, well, what's the purpose of teaching something in a certain way? It's really hard.
Right.
And I, and I agree with you. I don't think it's gonna take one year, it's gonna be more. But I also have to say, those SGPs, that growth is really, it is strong, and that, that's all you can ask. And if you've got kids below grade level who haven't been speaking the language for very long, to see them make that kind of growth, that, that is profound. And so that is a feather in their cap to our teachers and our students.
Any other member? Joe?
Yeah, so, eh, eh, as you guys pointed out, there is, um, you know, overall, the scores look good and we're trending in the right direction. There, there's certainly some room for improvement with some of these scores, in particular with, with math. But I just wanted to point out that this is a, a trend that the administration has seen coming, and you've been proactive in trying to address it. So we're not just reacting to these test scores. Like, you've already taken action and start to improve results down the road, whether it's reviewing the entire math curriculum, uh, making the changes at the middle school level, introducing algebra at a younger age, and then the math intervention specialists that you introduced at the elementary level. So, there's steps that you've put in place in anticipation that some of these, these scores not coming back the way we, we wanted them to. And I'm sure there's more work that's gonna be done, you know, the next year.
And it's really, and, and Craig and I talk about this all the time, you really have to look at the long game with any of this data, and you don't want to, and, and I've said this before when I've done the, and I thought Craig, you did a great job presenting the data.
Thanks.
I feel, I feel, I feel like, I feel like my baby has transferred to another parent to some degree. But the, uh, you do have to play the long game, and you really have to look at data over time. And we, we, we are, we did see a couple of things on the horizon, and you do make adjustments. But it does take time for some of these things to really take hold. And it's something that we're constantly, we're constantly looking at, at, you know, at the classroom level, the department level, the school level, as well as the district level. And I think we've got a lot of good eyes on it. And we're, we're leveraging some, you know, external resources as well, to kind of take advantage of expertise we may not have within the district.
I think one, one of the challenges with, with math in particular is that it is so different than it was when, when we were in school, right? So, it makes it very difficult for a parent to help their child out at home. And so they're not as engaged with, with math as they might be with some other subjects, because they're more comfortable teaching them those other subjects than teaching them this. So I don't know if there's, I don't know how that can be addressed, if there's anything, whether it's parent forums, or we walk them through the new math.
Yeah, we did a little of that the last couple of years. We've had, I think, um, I know Woodland for sure, one of our math specialists ran kind of a, how to help your child.
They did, yeah, they did games night. They did all the everyday math games, and kids came in and played with their parents. Because really, that's the best way to help, help the kids, is play the games with them, you know? And they're always, unfortunately, the thing about everyday math, the games are what's supposed to reinforce the, the skills. But if you run out of time in, during the day, for whatever reason, what do you think gets pulled out of the, out of the day so that you can do your language arts curriculum or reading? They're gonna pull the games, so, um.
Well, I think another obstacle you have, Craig, and I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt you, was last year when we had that homework.
Yep.
Forum. How many parents came right out and said they just didn't have the time, or they were rushed by the time.
That's reality. It's true.
And you made a valid point. If you do anything, anything, read with them.
Yep.
You know, but a lot of parents said they just don't have the time, or they have limited time to help their children with homework.
Right. It's a sad reality, I guess, um, but it's reality.
Yeah, yeah.
Tremendous question.
Sure.
For the next year's MCAS, have we decided as a district if we're going with the paper pencil or typed responses for grade four and eight?
We, in, so in four and eight, we have to take it, um, computer-based. And we've had the, we've had the discussion with, with, Woodland teaches to go computer-based three, four, or five. They have the resources. Um, students in third grade, by the time they get to fourth grade next year, and then from thereafter, are gonna be taking it computer-based anyway. So, we might as well give them the practice that they need in third grade, rather than have them do it on paper pencil. And then start them in the fifth grade too, because they're gonna have to take it the year after, um, anyways.
And, and the reality too, is that when students take the computer-based versus the paper and pencil, and I talked about this last year a little bit, the scores tend to be lower, um, because the, I think for a number of reasons, but one is just the familiarity with like the online testing format and all the tools you have to bring to bear to kind of answer some of the questions, or just not. And we're trying to get some familiarity with it, but it's, I think it's gonna take a year or two.
And it's a totally different skill. It, it's a totally different skill to be able to read text off of your computer versus being able to hold it in your hand and being able to read it. So, teachers are, are working on that now with, with students. We just got the, the Chromebooks in the, all the Woodland students' hands this past week or the week before. Um, so they're already starting that work.
And just a follow-up is, um, have you thought of, at all about any kind of keyboarding access, whether for during the school day or that parents could access? Because I don't know how the keyboarding will impact them, but I know that most of our kids only know how to do stuff with their thumbs.
Well, the, the, the good news with MCAS two point O is that I think we're gonna shift back to, even if it's part questions, we're shifting back to kind of an untimed format, which I think, which will take some of that keyboarding pressure off. So instead of sweating to get it done in a certain amount of time, if you're hunting and pecking, take your time with it to some degree. But we see a lot of it just happening organically. If students are using the keyboards regularly.
Yeah.
And we had that discussion today about, you know, handwriting versus keyboarding versus, you know, what do you, what do you emphasize, what do you emphasize as part of the curriculum at different levels? And I think everybody globally is wrestling with this.
Yeah.
Um, I think we're heading into a keyboarding direction.
But do you teach it explicitly?
Yeah, I don't know if we do that. And that's, that's something we're, we're kind of wrestling with too, is do you, do you maybe provide, maybe an online tool that if kids wanna practice it at home on the weekends, you know, either on their Chromebook or on their home computer? Is that something we do, or do we kind of take a more organic approach with some redirection by, you know, our teachers and some specialists?
Okay, any other member? Thank you, Craig. Nice job.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is the report of the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources, Mrs. Perry.
Thank you, Chair. I have seven warrants for the committee's approval this evening. The first warrant is in the amount of thirty-four thousand, four hundred, forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion from Joe, second from Jim, all in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of twenty-two thousand, one hundred, thirty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Motion from Jen, second by John, all in favor.
The third warrant is in the amount of sixteen thousand, one hundred, fifty-seven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Motion from Joe, second from John, all in favor.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of sixty-six thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Motion from Joe Calery, second by Jimmy, all in favor.
The fifth warrant is in the amount of one hundred, seventy-five thousand, six hundred, fifty-five dollars and forty-one cents.
Motion from Jen, second by John, all in favor.
The sixth warrant is in the amount of three hundred, fifty-two thousand, seven hundred, fifty-eight dollars and forty-one cents.
Motion from Jim, second by Joe, all in favor.
And the last warrant is in the amount of one hundred, forty-nine thousand, one hundred, twenty-seven and thirty-four cents.
Motion from Jen, second by Joe, Marius, all in favor.
The committee also has a cost reimbursement request in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred, seventy-four dollars and fifty cents.
Does that require a vote as well? Yeah. Motion from Jim, second by Jen, all in favor.
The committee also has the latest appointments and hires from our previous meeting for your review. I do have the vending machine allocation request from, um, Carrie Benak. The vending overall request for the high school is in the amount of seven thousand, one hundred, thirty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. And essentially, she is looking to fund additionally outside of her local appropriation with the funding, five or six programs, uh, peer mentoring, freshman orientation, academic decathlon, the mock trial, student leadership in the SAD program with the vending machine money. And it does require a vote of your approval, because the funding does sit with the school committee.
Okay, anybody have discussion on it? No?
A motion.
Okay, motion by Joe Calery, second by Jim, all in favor.
The next warrant item I have is for, uh, Dr. Matt Joseph, who would like to travel to Texas for a, um, national conference. The national conference, um, is the EdFi Technology, um, group. It's an alliance group. The, the funding that would be required would be approximately twelve hundred dollars. And that conference takes place this month. It is out-of-state travel, and it would require a school committee vote.
Any discussion before we vote? They have a motion. Motion from Jen, second by Joe Calery, all in favor.
I also have for the committee's approval this evening, two out-of-state travel field trip requests. The first one is for the, um, Hotel and Hospitality Program to travel to the Johnson Wales University in Providence. It will be the grades eleven and twelve that, um, are enrolled in the program. There are two teachers, thirty-three students attending, and this, um, field trip is for October twentieth.
What day of the week? Because you know that always gets asked.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
Yep, one day out of straight state to Providence.
Okay, any discussion? They have a motion. Motion from John, second from Jim, all in favor.
I have one additional field trip for grade two to attend, um, from Memorial School to attend the Biomes Marine Biology Center in North Kingston, Rhode Island. This field trip will be taking. This field trip will be taking place in March. There'll be ninety students. And, um, the cost per student is nine dollars, and this is Mr. Kiesel's class. Uh, well, he's representing, um, approximately ninety students.
And then, again, they, you know, that's okay, don't worry about it.
I'm not sure, that's okay.
Any discussion? Can I have a motion, please? Motion from Jen, second from John, all in favor.
And that's all I have for the committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Next agenda, agenda item is subcommittee updates. Do we have a Woodland Elementary School update?
Well, we're working on getting ready for the dedication, and there's a committee of people, um, planning for October thirtieth. Um, it'll be a Sunday afternoon. I think Kevin sent a communication out, that included that to families about, um, the time and the ceremony will be followed by tours of the building, and so I think there'll be more information to come on that.
The one, the one important piece to note on the dedication ceremony is, similar to when we held the open house for Woodland, we're gonna have sh- parking at the, the high school. Because of the site work still happening at Woodland, we don't have sufficient parking for, um, everyone at the event, so we're gonna run shuttle buses. Um, I, it will, we'll add more detail, but before the event begins, and enough time for people to tour after the actual ceremony.
Thank you, Budget.
Um, I was hoping that would go a little longer, so I could pull it up here. That's a little too quick. Um, so from a budget perspective, we, we talked about, early, we talked about Middle School East, um, and some of the questions that we need answered in regards to that facility, um. What else did we cover there, John? I'll try and pull this up.
Slap, totally few to pull it up.
How about if we jumped to marketing and communications? Have you met?
Yeah.
I get those minutes too. From, from a marketing, from a marketing perspective, and as, I pause it, it's take forever to load here. Um, we, we finalized some dates, um, we have the, the Athletic Roundtable that Peter Boucher's gonna be hosting on October eighteenth, where he invited members of all the different youth boards in to talk about how we can create a better partnership between the high school and, and the youth leagues. And then, from our perspective, for the school committee, are there things that, that we can do, whether it's, it's policy, um, you know, budget, protocol, whatever it might be, to help, um, them form those, those, those tighter bonds and partnerships? Uh, and then we also have dates finalized for the Middle School East, or not the Middle School East, 'cause they're not the eighth graders. Aren't there anymore Stacy Middle, Stacy eighth grade and seventh grade, eh, grade visit, um, for when, when the high school goes down there, when the eighth graders come up here for the tour? Um, and also the, uh, activities and, um, athletics night as well at the high school. That's gonna be, that's gonna happen in December. So we have dates for all that. If I had my minutes up, I'd tell you exactly what those dates are. I don't have that right now, so.
Uh, the Realtor Roundtable is still in.
John?
If I can, if I can just jump in, bridge in on the budget subcommittee update. Um, the topic of the last meeting was the two town meeting articles, the, uh, the money for the, the fire door replacements at Stacy Middle School and the elevator at Memorial School. Um, we spent some time talking with, with the administration about what the requirements were gonna be for that. We met with the, we then went on to meet with the finance subcommittee to discuss those articles. Um, and as you know, we ended up withdrawing the article for the elevators, because, uh, the vendor said that the parts appear that they will be, um, affordable and available for the next several years. So we've withdrawn that, that article for town meeting, and we're going forward with the article for the hardware and the nu- and the doors, the fire doors at Stacy Middle School.
Right.
Which the, um, finance committee did, uh, give a favorable recommendation. So that was, that was really the, the focus of the last budget subcommittee. And I had to scroll back a couple of pages of notes to, to remember that, you know, the time.
Much more effective.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. And the last is the policy we met this evening. Jen, do you wanna speak to that?
Well, I think the, uh, the most significant policy that we talked about tonight was updating the Walker and Rider policy. Um, and I believe, you're bringing that back to the committee?
We'll bring it, yeah, for first reading, probably for the October twentieth, um.
Right.
And the revisions were very minor. It was just in line with the new grade configuration.
Great, thank you, everybody. Next agenda item is future agenda items. Does anybody have anything that they would like us to add to future agendas? No? Okay, next agenda item is old business. Does anybody have any old business? No? We do not have an executive session tonight, so the next agenda item is motion for a German. John? Joe Calery, all in favor? Adjourned. Good night, everybody, and thank you for watching.